Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council meeting for November 30th here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center for tonight. For all those that are able, could you please rise and join us in an invocation by Councilmember McKibie followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I would like to welcome the Tempe resident and Imam Hafiz Mubashar. He leads McClintock Mosque's congregational prayers and teaches Quran to the community children. He has memorized the entire text of the Quran and has studied Islamic jurisprudence. Imam.
In the name of God, the most kind, the most merciful, the Lord of Ibrahim, the Lord of Moses, the Lord of Jesus, the Lord of Muhammad, peace and blessing be upon them. As we gather today, God, I ask for your mercy and blessings. O Lord, guide us with your guidance that leaves none unguided. Forgive us, O Lord, as your forgiveness brings peace, abundance, and protection to all. Our nation is a nation of immigrants and diversity. God, tell us in the Quran. O mankind, we have created you from a male and female and made you into nations and tribes that you may know one another. Indeed, the most honorable of you in the sight of God is the most righteous of you. Indeed, God is all-knowing, all-aware. God, I ask that you bestow upon our leaders the understanding to choose the which is right, abstain from what is wrong, and give them the wisdom and guidance to lead us. God, give them vision and ability to improve quality of life for all humanity. God, guide us to the straight path and accept this prayer. God bless us all. Thank you. Amen.
I just want to say one more thing that the McClintock Mosque is bringing forward baklava for the entire crowd and it should be served in the back shortly.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the city council meeting minutes. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve items K. 1 through 3.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry forward. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve items B. 1 through 17.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember McKibie. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next item is reports and announcements. I do not have any announcements. Mr. City Manager. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I've asked Brigida Kuiper, the city clerk, has a short announcement.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. At our last meeting on October 26th, you approved Resolution R. 2017-134, which designated the spring 2018 elections as ballot-by-mail elections and also established two ballot-center locations in Tempe. That resolution also gave the city clerk the authority to change a ballot-center location in the event of an emergency or unforeseen circumstance. Based on that authority and due to the changes in the library's remodeling schedule, the ballot center in the library complex originally set at the history museum will now be moved back to the second floor of the library where voting has taken place in the past. There will be no changes to the second ballot center at City Hall. This information will be on the website and multiple methods of advertising will be used as the spring elections come closer. Thank you.
With that, we move on. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion by the city council. Unless an item is removed for separate consideration, members of the public may remove any public carrying items for separate consideration. Public carrying items are designated by an asterisk and councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public carrying item, could you please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers? And can you please hand that to our deputy city clerk? And then I'll call your name and it's your turn for public comment. Consent agenda is as follows. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A5. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B15. Resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C11. Again, any agenda item that is marked with an asterisk that I just read is a public carrying item and it can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If you'd like to have a public carrying on an item removed, the items I just read, could you please get my attention now? Seeing none. I'll look to my council colleagues. Is there any items? Yes, Councilmember Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5C1 and 5C2.
It's 5C1 and 5C2. Anybody else? Seeing none. I look for a motion with the consent agenda as read with the exception of items 5C1 and 5C2.
They're moved.
Moved by Councilmember Granville.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. David, are you on? David? Maybe he's not on yet. All right. That motion passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Shapira absent. Next is items 5C1, which is, "Adopted Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Third Amendment to the Second Cable Licensing Renewal Agreement between the City of Tempe and COTC Communications, Arizona LLC." Councilmember Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had this polled, so I was, would vote no.
Okay. Is there a motion? Does anyone else have any comments or discussion on item 5C1? Is there a motion on item 5C1? Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, or just please vote.
Aye.
Oh, David's here. That motion passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Granville voting no. Next item is 5C2, "Adopted Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the License for a Video System Service System and Right-Away Use Agreement between the City of Tempe and COTC Communications, Arizona LLC." Councilmember Granville.
It's the same thing, Mayor. I just had this item polled because I was not in consent.
Okay. As you noted, is there any other comments or discussion from the council on item 5C2? Seeing none. Is there a motion on item 5C2? Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
All right. That motion passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Granville voting no. Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. The first section of the non-consent agenda is our miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. Item 6A1 is hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution to modify the return flow calculation of residential sanitary sewer service by amending Appendix A of the Tempe City Code. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? This is a public hearing item. Seeing none. I'll close that portion. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A1? If not, is there a motion? Oh, yes, Councilmember McKibie.
I just wanted to point out that, you know, current, our current return flow calculation is 70% and one of, I think, the lowest in the East Valley. And with the 12, with the cap on 12,000 gallons return, that really is definitely the lowest in the valley. And I think it's a good step forward towards recognizing that the large lots in Tempe have less return flow back to the city's wastewater treatment center. So, I approve. I approve and look forward to voting on this and make a motion to approve.
That a motion?
Yes.
Has been moved by Councilmember McKibie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item is item 6A2, "To Hold a Public Hearing and Adopt a Resolution Modifying the Rates for Improving Domestic Water Service by Amending Appendix A of the Tempe City Code." This is a public hearing item. I do have one card. Mr. Alex Monti. Ms. Alex Monti. Sorry.
I am Alex Monti and I'm representing the City of Tempe's Sustainability Commission. So, thank you for appointing us to that. Our recommendation has been passed along to you. Hopefully, you got to read it. I have a copy tonight all week with you too. But our recommendation is the approval of the proposed rate plan, which we think will bring us closer to our goal, which is 110 gallons per capita per day right now. We'd also like to see more robust goals. We believe that the process that was undertaken to develop the reasonable use profiles for these residential classes was done very well and strategically and scientifically. And we'd like to see similar processes used for all the customer classes to develop a reasonable use profile for each of those classes and conservation goals. The Sustainability Commission would also like to assist the council by providing, let's see, targets and guidance on how to incorporate emerging technologies like smart meters, rainwater harvesting, high-efficiency irrigation. So, those are some things that we would like to assist with integrating into our next rate study. And also, we believe it's vital to clarify what landscaping is going to look like in this desert city. And we want to start addressing the trade-offs of cooling, shade, food production, carbon sequestration, and water efficiency. Lastly, we think it's a priority that the city develop a strategic management plan for the sustainable use of water, as we believe it's vital to optimize our use of water.
Thank you. That's the only card I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under item 6A2? Seeing none. Close that portion of the public hearing. Any comments or discussion from the council under item 6A2? Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage.
I guess that's me. All right, thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say I really do appreciate the work. I know we had a third-party consultant come in and really help us with the new rate structure. I do appreciate the work from staff trying to find something that they believe is the best fit moving forward. And of course, I do appreciate all the feedback and input that we've gotten from our residents. Some positives, some not so great. Yeah, we did get a little bit of feedback. And I think that's, that's what it's all about. That's what democracy is. And, and so, there's a couple of things. I do think, obviously, that we do need a new rate structure. I think we all agreed that we need to do something a little bit different. We need to make sure it was equitable across the board as it could possibly be. And I think we're definitely going down that road. For me, though, this is just, I still have a lot of reservations in regards to what's happening with our residents that have large lots. I think that there are some things that we have to take into consideration, the fact that we have some people that do have large lots. They have maybe lots of trees, lots of vegetation, and landscaping, and for a lot of different reasons. Maybe it's privacy reasons. Maybe it's noise reduction. And maybe it's for the fact that, you know, they want that type of landscaping, which I can appreciate. I'm kind of a grass lover myself and I do appreciate greenery. And realize that there's got to be a happy median and a balance for that. And we've worked so hard to work on our goals and our initiatives to create more shade in the city of Tempe and to have a tree canopy and have committed to that just recently. So, I think it's only fair that we make sure that our residents are able to do exactly the same things that we are trying to do in the city of Tempe, because together, that's, that's what it's all about. They are part of that process and part of that vision. So, my thought is, I do know moving forward, that this, this new rate structure does benefit a lot of our residents. I completely understand that. I think when we remove the waste sewer, that's definitely going to help a lot of people. But there are a lot of people that are on septic. And that's about like 470-some residents that won't get that benefit. And I think we need to definitely make sure that we are looking into that. And I think we need to do a little bit better for our residents that have larger lots. So, as much as I want to move forward with the rates, I feel like we need to do more. And I think that we have some ideas of what we possibly could do. And maybe it's doing two separate meters, one for landscaping, one for the residents. I think there's a lot of things to explore. And I would hope that the council would indulge the fact that we may have some time to be able to do that and to maybe bring back some suggestions and ideas. I think we've heard some great ideas, not only from staff, but some from, some residents, that I think may, really may be viable. And I think that might be the way that I would feel comfortable moving forward, but knowing that there's some check-ins. And definitely, I would never do anything into 2019 until I'm more comfortable with what we're doing with a lot of our residents that have, are higher water users. But they're higher water users because they live on, are in large lots. And I respect that. And I think that is part of the character of the neighborhood and part of the character that they want to be a part of. And I feel like it's our responsibility to make sure that we embrace that at some point.
Okay. All right. Sorry, we can't hear any clapping. No stopping your feet. Sorry. Anyone else in the council? Yes, Councilmember McKibie.
Sure. I have a lot of things to say. First of all, I want to just thank water staff and Don Bessler and Marilyn DeRosa, who led the entire study. And it's been about a year, I believe, right? Since we began this road. And there's so much to be thankful for and all the, the public engagement that took place and so many hours of not just study, analysis, and, you know, work with a consultant, but just tremendous amount of time engaging the public in this issue. And I think this is an issue we've all taken extremely seriously. And I am the Tempe representative on the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. And today, we heard a presentation about, about cost avoidance. The cap, all the municipal customers across, across Maricopa County paid something called forbearance. In order to prevent Lake Mead from going under that magic number, 1075, we opted over the past couple of years to pay out about $9 million, which it does go out to you customers out there. Tempe is less affected by that than a lot of cities, but we paid a forbearance, not taking water, and it amounted to about $9 million. We also learned that if we hadn't done that, we would have paid out $21 million for the same period of time. And so, that was actually a very smart move to pay out that money, because we avoided costs in the future. So, when you look, I mean, that's a macro scale of looking at the valley and the entire watershed. But when you look at the micro scale, you look at Tempe, there's a lot of studies from the Arizona Alliance for Water Efficiency. They did one study in Tucson and they showed the avoided costs of nearly 12% from water conservation and from inclining block structures and pricing structures. And this is a really important thing to notice, because I know I've had a lot of citizens, and I'm sure you guys did, who said, "Wait, if we're conserving money, conserving water, why do our rates keep going up?" And the fact is, yeah, they are going up to reflect that, that water is indeed a precious resource in the desert. But they're going up far less than they would if we weren't trying to conserve and try and reduce the cost to the system. So, when we look at our water structure pricing, that's, we're going to vote on tonight, and we see, for example, the, the larger unit, the larger, let's look at 100,000 gallons or more, a customer that uses that much water in a month averaged out. So, we have, I'm just going to go to this figure, sorry. So, that customer, their monthly bill in 2015, before the, before the last rate study changes were enacted, the rate changes I think people are upset about, would have been about $496 a month. The 2018 rates adjusted with only cost, CPI, no change scenario, would be 566. So, that's an increase of about $70. The current rates are 599. Their proposed rates are 522. So, that's only about, you can do the math, it's like, so that's, you know, $29 more than they were in 2015 per month, which is pretty reasonable. And it's actually, you know, it's $70 cheaper than the past rates were. I see you shaking your head, but I'm looking at the same, and I'm happy to provide this, this rate chart for you that shows that for someone who has 100,000 gallons a month that uses that much, the rates they'll be paying under the proposed rates, 522 a month averaged over the year, that's less than the 599 they're paying now. So, unless you have different figures, that's what we've received. So, you know, I think this has been a really robust process and no one tier is subsidizing another tier. They're based on the cost of service for each individual tier. And each individual tier gains advantage of the tier before them. So, I just want to credit staff for a tremendous amount of work and public engagement that's gone into this and would love to hear further from my other colleagues on the council.
Thanks. Is anyone else in the council wishing to address us? Councilmember Granville.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I, again, of course, great job staff did. This is what happens when you have a great staff that hires great, great experts. I appreciate the way we've done our tier system. The way we did it before was, I think, inexact, to use the right term, right? Is, and we all know how this system works. It's the system that you use with your electricity. At 2:00 in the afternoon, your electricity bill's higher. Why? Because everyone's running the air conditioning. SRP had to build some special power plant just for 2:00 in the afternoon, or they had to buy electricity on the market. Well, Tempe has to do the exact same thing with water, except we do it at 6:00 a.m. We have to buy water on the market, so to speak, by building extra plants. And so, the way we were doing that before, I think, was inexact ways. We said, "Okay, for the people that, for that 6:00 a.m. peak on July 5th, we're building a plant just for you. And we think it's 1.5 more than the base or 1.25 more." We're coming up with just a random multiplier. And to staff's credit, they said, "Look, we don't get to just make this up. We have to know exactly how much we're building just for you and charge you that exact amount." And that's what I think I'm excited to see reflected in this, is while they are numbers that I, I think, like Councilmember Arredondo Savage, I struggle with a little bit, they are numbers that are backed by, by fact, by research, right? And so, we've only got two choices. We can either say that we hired an expert to do this, not by eyeballing it, and believe them, and adopt what an expert tells us to do, or we can say that our expert is wrong and we should fire them. I'm going to opt with, they, having looked over this stuff, I think they probably know what our peaking rates are. They know what 2:00 in the afternoon's air conditioning bill looks like and how much more power plant they had to build just for you. And so, I, I would take a little bit of, there's been an ongoing discussion back and forth about, well, you're punishing people. And I don't, I, if, you know, if you want to water your lawn at 2:00 in the morning instead of 6:00 in the morning, well, then we don't have a 6:00 a.m. peak rate. But we do, because that's when people water their lawn. And so, I think we have to take that into account, the treatment that we do just for these 6:00 a.m. people that water their lawn. That said, one of the things that has frustrated me about this process is we're trying to encourage conservation. And what we're trying to do is encourage conservation of users. You know, don't shower for four hours, don't, whatever, you know, buy a low-flow toilet or whatever. But there are some people who might have an acre lot who are the most efficient water users in the city. And they're going to pay $5 and something per 1,000 gallons. And so, if we're trying to encourage efficiency as well, we should understand that perhaps some of our heaviest users might actually be the ones that we should most be patting on the back and taking into account. And so, I talked at our meeting a couple of days ago, and I'm hopeful that we'll have some idea of how to do this, is for the people that have acre lots or three-quarter acre lots or larger, that we give them the ability to split their meter and get the deal that we give our commercial users. And that is a landscaping meter. And so, what I, what I would like to see is that we can say, "Look, if you're going to waste your water in your house, then we are going to charge you a bunch of water bills. But if you're going to just take care of your lawn, your acre lawn, at the normal, usual, appropriate water conservation way, that's not you wasting water. We're not going to have something to punish you for that." So, the only way to do that is to split it, right? And so, what I would hope that we would do is for people that are, you know, three-quarters of an acre, an acre larger, that we would direct staff to come back in the future to see about a process for them splitting their meters and having a landscaping meter and having a residential interior use meter. But honestly, it wouldn't apply to me at all, because I'm on a quarter-acre lot and I'm not going to run into 100, like, if I'm running into 100,000 gallons on a quarter-acre lot, that basically means I'm watering my neighborhood with just like garden hoses out front all day. So, I'm never going to need a landscape meter, because I'm never going to be that person, right? I'm not, I don't have a big enough lot to where that matters. So, that would be my hope, is that we direct staff to look at, for the large lot users, having a landscape meter, as well as an option for them, the same way we do for commercial customers.
I want to echo some of the comments that have been made. First, I really want to thank staff. I mean, this has been a long process and I do want to thank the residents, because we've, most of us up, I know the council up here, we've been to some neighborhood meetings that we've held, some at the library or at the history museum, some at Arizona Community Church. And I want to thank the residents for being involved, because I think, based on what's before us tonight, we've listened to the residents, because we've altered, we've changed the rate, the tier structures. So, now, we added a fifth tier, which really benefits a lot of the users in our community and Councilmember McKibie pointed out. I also want to point out, though, there, part of that, who has not been affected by that, is the homeowners that Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage mentioned with the septic. That is not being addressed. So, what I would hope is that we look forward, moving with the rates that staff has, and have staff work with those septic homeowners, as well as the lot size that Councilmember Granville mentioned, half an acre, we'll figure, have staff work with us on that. And then, upcoming in the next six months, to see if there's an opportunity, how we can work with the large lot owners with a landscape meter, and then the residential side would have the resident, which would be subjected to the rates that we're looking at tonight with the tiers. That could, that's something I think that I would be interested in, that the council's interested in. So, it's something I think, and I can't stress enough, it's that we listen to our residents. You know, sometimes we hear we don't listen to us. Well, we listen to us, because we added another tier structure to it. And we're looking at some of the large lot owners, and then we realize, hey, wait a minute, looking at the sewer cap, that's not really affecting some of the residents in our community that are on septic. So, how can, what programs can we work with staff to help and educate our residents and how can we help those individuals? Because a lot of times, the individuals that may have the septic have maybe the larger lot sizes. And I could think of a couple of neighborhoods that are like that, which would be beneficial with a landscaping meter. So, I think, there's a lot that I think we all should be proud of, what we've accomplished so far. I look forward to having more of this discussion. That's kind of, I mean, that's a good starting point for us. If we look at the rates that is before us, the only thing I would, I would look at is if maybe we hold off on, until staff comes back in the six months on the 2019 CPI, but we adopt the tier structure that we have. We also look at working with the large lot owners to see if there's an opportunity to work with them on a landscaping meter. That's one of the suggestions. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly say that I think that, that proposal is a, is a good compromise and we should, I'd be supportive in looking into that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have an idea.
You have an idea?
I do. Well, and two, I think I want to kind of put some deadlines in there. So, I think it's kind of really important. I was just looking at the calendar. I know we have a work-study session on March 22nd, that maybe that would be a good possibility for, and Andrew, I guess I would ask if that's reasonable, to have some expectations for staff to come back with some thoughts and ideas of how we can address large lot owners and how we can work with those individuals that are on septic systems. And, you know, I feel like that's a pretty good balance, March 22nd. Is that possible?
I mean, in terms of timing, yes. Brigida, city clerk Kuiper asked, or just showed me that we had previously said that we were going to try to limit that to CIP discussion, but if we need to, we could move it.
April?
Because it's the same night as an executive session. So, while we have a work-study session, we can find it at another time, maybe the, the first April work-study, if that's okay.
What's the date?
It'd be April 19th.
Okay.
But in answer to the larger question, yes. Staff can come back and prepare information based on the research that they will do between today's date and that date regarding different options for addressing what you just described.
Okay. All right. I'm going to give this a shot and hopefully, we can find a little compromise. So, feel free to jump in if we can, if you can make it a little bit better. But I'd like to go ahead and move that we implement the new rate and tier structure for 2018 only, holding off on the 2019 adjustment, with staff coming back on April 19th to address the concerns of residents in large lots and those on septic systems, with suggestions and ideas and tools to be used. and tools to be used. Did I get it all?
I think so.
To address our residents' concerns.
But to be clear, though, we're moving forward with the rates and the tiers as presented, and the only thing we're doing is holding off on the CPI increase for 2019.
Correct.
And then, and then, but at that time, we could take action, actually, probably after April.
It'd have to be after April.
To, to implement 2019.
Well, and I think, Andrew, too, and that's the only thing. I would not want to limit, if there's some tools that we think are going to be successful, that we have the ability to implement them within the 2018 calendar year.
Exactly. Yeah, that, that would be the instruction to staff, to look for any and all tools to address the concerns that have been raised tonight, to implement them as they become available to be implemented.
Did you get that, Brigida? Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Could we incorporate that in the motion, BK? I mean, Brigida, Kuiper, Mrs. Kuiper.
I sure can, but just for clarification, you are approving the resolution with the amendment that you just read into the record, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would second that, Mayor.
And I just want to clarify that, too, Brigida, that that does eliminate the automatic adjustment in 2019.
Yes, it would.
But, to be clear, though, we're, we're going to be looking at, when staff comes back in April, we're also going to be looking at addressing that, because we have to.
After.
For '19, to, to implement a. So, something, so that we're looking at taking action. I mean, we're moving forward with the rates and the tiers that's presented with us right now, based on staff's recommendation. And then, listening to the residents, we're looking at getting some more information, see what else we could do to help with the larger lots, as well as the, the homes that are on septic. Councilmember McQby.
Don, would you mind coming to the front? I just wanted to ask our Public Works Director about this possible plan, because, you know, in the beginning of 2017, or at the end of 2016, we delayed, delayed the rates. I know there were financial repercussions to that, and we are in a, this is enterprise fund, and we're nearing towards a structural deficit. So, and I realize this is just another delay, but what would the impact be of, is it even possible to talk about what the impact would be tonight of this vote if we do delay that 2019 increase permanently?
Mayor, councilmember, am I on? Is this working? Yeah, thank you. I think that's a completely workable situation. We're not in a rush to implement the second year of a two-year rate increase just because of the CPI. We certainly can come back and talk about that. You have, frankly, till next fall to really come to grips with that, because you have to do a certain amount of public outreach and warning and so forth. But we can make that work. And I'm not concerned by the fiscal impact of it.
So, is the April date enough time to come back with a recommendation and analysis of, of the impact of perhaps having a landscape water rate?
Mayor, councilmembers, the April 19th is a, is a good amount of time for us to really do some hard groundwork, to find out what else is out there in the, in the industry for best practices. It's certainly not enough time to put into place the structure of a program like that, because I can just almost assure you that thinking we're doing one good thing will have some other unintended consequence that we haven't calculated, and our consultants haven't run through the rate model, so, and the cost-of-service model. But I know we can come to you with some pretty concrete ideas, and then start working towards them. And as the city manager indicated, we could look at implementing pieces of those as the council feels like they make sense, and go through the appropriate process.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? There's been a motion in a second. Anyone else, David?
I mean, the only thing I'd like to add, I mean, I agree with what Councilmember Granville talked about in terms of separating landscaping, if possible. But I definitely think that there should be another variable in the calculation. And I know this is difficult, about the size of the lot. And, and I know that's, that's, a lot of the discussion is that there's these big lots that have a lot of landscaping to cover. You know, if, if someone has a, an acre lot, as opposed to Colby, who has a quarter-acre lot, you know, I, I think that, you know, there should be some consideration about which tier their pricing goes into. Maybe it should take four times the amount to get into that tier. I just don't know if there's a way to factor that into our formula. So, if staff goes back to look at this, I'd like to see if that's possible.
Mayor, we could certainly have that be one of the criteria that we look at. And I don't even want to give you an early read on it, other than to say that the premise under which we bring forward the rates by customer class and by tier within a class is to make sure that everybody pays their proportional fair share for whatever that class, or whatever demands that tier is putting on the system. So, how lots size plays into it, I'm not exactly sure. I don't want to rule that out. But I also just want to make sure that fundamentally, we're not hearing you say that we should depart from the practice of each class and each tier is accounted for whatever the costs are to produce that. That said, that doesn't mean we can't come back with some pretty creative ways to see if we can figure out this landscape meter thing. We offer landscape meters now. And essentially, private homeowners can get them right now, too. But they're, the, the problem with it is that they're put, they're confronted with a larger upfront cost, and that sometimes just isn't possible. So, we really need to look at how that could work. Maybe there's a portion of that upfront cost that could be waived, or maybe it could be paid over time, or, I don't know. But we just need to look at that.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, there's been a motion in a second. Let's go ahead, please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda, is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing of these votes, of third, for these items will be scheduled for December 14th. Item 6B1 is introduce and hold the first public hearing adopting ordinance for zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay and development plan review for Phase 1, consisting of one-story building addition and commercial uses within the existing mill building of Hayden Farm Mill, located at 119 South Mill Avenue. The applicant is Iconic Mill LLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 14th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience? Well, first, with the app, oh, this she is, sorry. Ms. Vaz, would you like to make a presentation?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Monjula Vaz, Lawton, Gambridge, and Burnham. With me tonight is David Baum, is here from Iconic Mills. David is not going to be able to attend the second hearing on December 14th, so he wanted to say a couple of words, and just do a very brief public hearing, yeah, public presentation, if that's okay. So, I mean, well, he'll just do a brief public presentation. We didn't need to go through all this. But, there you go, here's David.
Yes, indeed. Happy for that. For the record, my name is David Baum with Iconic Mills, 1030 West Chicago Avenue. On behalf of myself and my partners, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to address council tonight. I've met with most of you, other than Councilmember Keating, multiple times. And I appreciate everyone's time. So, I'll only take a few minutes tonight and tell you what we're up to. We consider it a privilege to do what we do, and an honor to be entrusted with this incredibly important landmark. We appreciate the collaboration and the passion that all of you have put into this project. It's so important to so many people in so many different ways. We take the responsibility very seriously. We try to listen to everyone, all of their concerns and their ideas. We aggregated all of those ideas, all of that input. We put that into a, a list of design criteria by which we inform the site. And those are a light touch, activate the site, make it available and inviting to the public, celebrate the history, be a good environmental stewards, respect the sightlines of both the building and the mountain. It's a complex project. It's got many challenges. Each stakeholder group seems to see things through a slightly different lens. And we try to listen to them all. So, we have the preservation community. I consider myself amongst, in that community. None of us can all agree. We all agree in general, there's little tidbits that we disagree with, and, but we're good. We have a, an environmental community, concerned about water conservation at the over tonight, among other things. We have the four southern tribes. They have a list of concerns. We have the business community. We have neighbors. We have planning and staff. We have metro valley. We have outdoor enthusiasts. And then, of course, we have council members, who are concerned about all of those things. We try to carefully consider all of what we heard, and design that into a project that addresses all of what's important, and comes up with a way to celebrate the site. Our goal is to develop something truly special, something that we can all be proud of, that can be enjoyed by generations to come. We think we're there. We think we have a great plan that does all of that. And with your permission, we're prepared to execute. I wanted to thank you again for your time. Can answer all questions. I can go into as much detail as you'd like. I know you've, you've seen this before. So, again, I wanted to be respectful of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for you or Ms. Vaz. First off, I'm excited about, first off, you picked a great photo. It was an awesome photo you picked. But what happens, and I don't think this will happen, but you always plan for contingencies. What happens, you know, if, if this doesn't move forward at this point? If we vote, we pass it, and in six months, or a year, or two years, you know, that, through no fault of your own, this just something comes up. Are there, can you talk a little bit about the preservation plan you have as an interim plan, and what the process forward is, just on the off chance anything goes wrong?
So, let me start by saying, we've already submitted for our Part 1 application through National Park Service. It's been accepted and approved. We have already submitted our Part 2. That is with SHPO and with John Southard at the city. That is being reviewed now. So, we're going through the process. We have already raised all of our equity, which is the most challenging part.
Oh, you could stop there, almost. Okay, but please continue anyway, yeah.
Yes, so, we have raised our equity, and it's, yes, so that's important. That said, and it's been a great process. And I, and by the way, I want to throw this out. I've been through this process before, not here, but in lots of places. And you always hope that there's really collaboration. It's really important to people. It doesn't always wind up that way. This has, we've had lots of challenges, but this has been a great process. We really enjoyed it, because it has made the project better. I mean, there's been challenges, for sure, but we have learned things. We have made friends. We have done a lot of good work. And so, it has been something that's been really helpful. Part of that process was dealing with Alex and with the city attorney. And in, what you'll find in the development agreement is that it says, if we don't do it by X date, we're out. By the way, no lawsuits referencing past problems. So, that has been provided for, and there's been a lot of work done on that process. That said, I think, when I met with you, councilmember, I think what I told all of you was, I'm here to get it done. And I've been doing, I've been chopping at that, at that rock for a long time. We're there now. So, the money's been raised, applications have been made, we're ready to go. To your point, who knows? You know, the world could blow up, and it doesn't get done. There are provisions in the development agreement to satisfy that.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you, because this is something that we've talked about a lot over the years. And to see something like this come with, with the dedication that you put in with the historic aspect of it, is really, I want to thank you for that, one. It's going to be a great project for our community. It's one of the main gateways into our city. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6A2? Seeing none, there's, I'm sorry, I mean, 6B1. This is only the first hearing. So, with that, we'll move on to the next item. Item 6B2 is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of non-exclusive ingress and egress easement to Arizona Public Service Company over a certain city-owned land, between 1,250 feet east of Skystar Road and Clubview Drive. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 14th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B2? Seeing none. Our close-up portion is in comments or discussion from the council on item 6B2. Seeing none. Next is item 6B3, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement of land and improvement lease and easements with L. Phoenix LLC, L. Phoenix II LLC, and the watermark Tempe 1 LLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 14th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant like to make a presentation under item 6B3? Seeing none. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B3? Seeing none. Any comments or discussion from the council? Next, item 6B4, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to approve an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 29, relating to streets and sidewalk, to make changes to the code consistent with new state law. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 14th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council under item 6B4? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council? Seeing none. Next is item 6B5, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 2, the Tempe City Code for dogs, cats, et cetera, to add Section 6-33, 6-34, and 6-35, regulating the restraint of dogs on private property. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 14th. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? I'll look to my council colleagues. Seeing none. Move on. The, the agenda, the agenda items scheduled for second hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on November 9th, 2017, and the votes will be taken tonight. Ordinance is items for second hearing and final adoption. Item 6C1 is hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 1, Section 2-401 of the City of Tempe Code to include emergency medical technicians and paramedics in the firefighter's employee group. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C1? Could you please get my attention now? Seeing none. Close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council? Is there a motion, item 6C1? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. Councilman Shpire. That motion carries, Mr. Shpire, are you there? That motion carries six to zero, with Councilman Shpire not voting. Next item is items 6C2, is to hold a second and final public hearing under adopted ordinance, authorizing a dedication of certain city-owned land located near the intersections of Southern Avenue and Rural Road for the use of public right-of-way, and authorizing a city engineer or her doesn't need to execute a declaration memorializing such dedication and related documents. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C2? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. If there's any comments or discussion from council, or a motion, item 6C2? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Navarro. Please vote. Please vote. That motion carries, Councilmember Shapiro? That motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Shapiro not voting. Item 6C3 is hold a second and final public hearing under adopted ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 13, City Elections, Article 2, relating to the required disclosure obligations for local Tempe elections conditioned upon the effective date of the proposed charter amendment for contribution source disclosure. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C3? Yes, please come forward.
You have two cards there.
Okay, Morgan?
Hello.
I just got the cards. Sorry.
Good evening.
Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Morgan Dick, and I am here with the Arizona Advocacy Network. Just quickly, wanted to, on behalf of all Arizona advocacy networks, members, thank you for your support throughout this journey to give voters the right to know who is influencing local Tempe elections. Thank you for giving the voters a chance to have their voice heard on this issue and for all of yours and staff's hard work on preparing this ordinance language. Requiring people to stand up in public for their political acts fosters civic courage without which democracy is doomed. Justice Scalia said that. With this charter amendment and proposed ordinance, Tempe is requiring people to stand up for their actions and gives voters the opportunity to react to those actions. This transparency will be good for Tempe's future and good for democracy, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez? Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mario Martinez, and I live in Tempe. Considering the dark money ordinance, I truly respect all the differing viewpoints on this issue. I would like to specifically address the anti-Coby Granville dark money mailers used in the 2016 city council elections. They have been appropriately mentioned by the press when considering this ordinance. I intended to use photos to demonstrate how these were developed. I can't do that now, so I'll send them for the record, okay? Basically, this, for the first, the, I can't put it up here, okay, but basically Kobe complains about these, but I'd like to point out that the picture for this dark money mailer, it came from Kobe's website. He published it there, okay? I mean, they took this photo, he publicly posted it, and they mentioned that, they mentioned that some facts about what his positions were, okay? So I think it's really disingenuous for him to say, oh, these things are so terrible, but he doesn't point out where they got, who the main photographer, who the photographer was. That, you know, they referred to some statements about these racially charged statements. They referred to him as a gutless politician who weaseled. And while I can appreciate that the funding for these mailers might require more public transparency, I really don't find that comment, I find it to be a perfectly reasonable point of view. We saw how he acted with the ethics problems he spent over, because of him, we had to run up over $20,000 in legal fees. He gets on television, he laughs about it, he says that, well, I think I wasn't too, I misjudged this woman's sensitivity. I mean, he's got to be held accountable by that. It's not a laughing matter, okay? And if he is not, if he acts these way, there should be things like mailers that we should be able to point that out. And whether the council majority and perhaps the majority of the Tempe voter support this measure or not, I want to point out, if we spend a bunch of money for a losing legal battle, Tempe's not going to benefit, and this ordinance is not going to go into effect. I only request that the six remaining ethical city council members seriously consider the legal and financial viability of this dark money ordinance when you consider this issue. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address item 6C3? Yes, please come forward. Please state your name in place of residence for the record.
For the record, my name is Carl Parish. I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm also the state chapter leader for Represent Us, and I just want to reiterate that we believe that a democracy requires an informed electorate, and to have an informed electorate requires transparency. And so measures like this dark money ordinance are steps in the right direction to allow the citizens to make informed decisions without which we really cannot. So election integrity requires this. We're definitely in favor of this, and we thank you for the opportunity to put it on the ballot.
And thank you. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Seeing none. A close-up portion, and a lot of work has gone into this, and I want to thank Councilmember QB, Councilmember Shapiro, for the working group that this has taken place. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Terry Goddard filed a ballot today?
Yes, yesterday.
Yesterday. Yeah. Filed it yesterday, and I think they're going to be getting signatures to make sure that something of this nature could go statewide, and I think that's important, so I think we all do. Yeah. I'd like to say something, Councilmember QB.
Sure. I just wanted to say to clarify, because I heard some questions from some voters. So we've already referred the charter amendment to the March 13 ballot, this regular city council elections. So the voters will decide whether they'd like to see independent expenditure groups disclose their original source donors, and that's a choice for the voters to make. This, tonight, we're voting on the language of the actual ordinance, so let's keep dark money out of Tempe, out of local Tempe elections. We'll be voting on the language, the rules of the road of the ordinance. And I do want to say, I'm really proud that Tempe's taken the first step of all Arizona cities, and I heard recently that Phoenix is looking at a very similar ordinance and a similar charter amendment. And to clarify about the Terry Goddard statewide initiative, that will have a restriction of $10,000, so any independent expenditure group spending more than $10,000 will have to reveal the original source donors. Now, $10,000 in a Tempe election is a lot of money, and so we obviously need to have a little bit of a different, more locally focused law that will aim at the local city context, and that limitation for us is $1,000. Any independent expenditure group spending more than $1,000 in the Tempe ordinance will be required to reveal the original source donors. So I'm excited that Terry's taking this statewide. I think it's important that during these next few months, we'll have a discussion as a community that will help the statewide discussion move forward as well, and I'm proud that we're taking the very first step. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for leading this initiative and for Councilmember Shapiro, and especially to Terry Goddard, who tugged on our sleeves about this in the spring, and the Arizona Advocacy Network, who brought their expertise and their passion and determination to try and shine the light on dark money. Thank you so much.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure.
There's a motion. Councilmember QB moved to approve item 6C3.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Welcome back. Next item is item 6C4 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor or doesn't need to execute an agreement granting a non-exclusive perpetual drain and easement as part of an access drainage and retention easement agreement for properties located on certain city-owned land south of Warner Road and east of Interstate 10. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C4? Seeing none. Close-up portion. Any comments or discussion from the council on item 6C4 or a motion on item 6C4?
So moved.
No comments?
No comments? Councilmember QB.
So I understand there was some confusion about the language that was included in the memo that accompanied the ordinance, and the memo implied that there was perhaps current plans to develop a park there. And so we want to make it clear that this is a local archery club that requested and was granted access for practice, but there are no further plans currently for using that space as a park. In the language, the preceding language in the request for council action, it said, you know, a park and then a possible park, and in the actual ordinance, it says, I'm sorry, the actual ordinance says a possible park, and the memo said a park. And so this is not to be misunderstood. We are not, you know, we have no current plans, and if there are going to be plans, there'll be a robust public process, and we will make sure that all the pros and cons are weighed, including the health aspects that were brought up by certain members of the community. Just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilmember Keating and a second by Vice Mayor Arredano Savage. So there's a motion and a second. If no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. Next item is our current events and council announcements. Councilmember Keating?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember QB?
Yes.
Mike, Mike, Mike?
Sorry. About the Tempe Book Bike. And so Sean King is the Tempe Book Bike Ambassador, and he is a marine veteran with experience working with homeless populations and those experiencing dementia, and he takes the Tempe Book Bike out three times a week to neighborhoods and to events and on six rotating routes. He's doing great work for the city. He'll be at Clark Park this weekend, December 2, at 10:00 a.m. And I want to thank not only Sean King, who's our Tempe Book Bike Ambassador, but Kathy Huster, Nick Escalante, and Shelley Hearn for this great little program. It's just such a delight to see it touring around our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have something to mention. We're doing a survey, and we're talking about right-of-way walls, arterial right-of-way walls, walls that are deteriorating around our neighborhoods. Little history, I think this is one of the things that obviously we're seeing within our city, our right-of-ways and improving our right-of-ways, but in addition to that, we also have right-of-way walls that are facing larger streets like McClintock Railroad that are falling apart, and there's really no strategic system to get the walls up to date or back looking good again. So we want to take a survey and let residents weigh in. The survey will be open until January 30, and basically kind of get their opinions of what we can do for right-of-way walls. What are some of the improvements? How can we get this, these improvements done to upgrade or to improve your neighborhood, your gateway, so to speak, within your neighborhood? I think there's value with it. There's value for our residents in Tempe, and there's value for people that visit our city to see how well we take care of our city, our right-of-ways, and making sure that we do it safely, too. So I invite everyone, when they can, to visit our website on, you'll see it just on your screens, but at www.temp.gov/neighborhoodsurvey. Go to the survey and get your input, and I'd love to hear from you. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Arredano Savage?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, a great reminder that the Fantasy of Light Boat Parade is coming up on the 9th at Tempe Town Lake. Hopefully you can all come out. It's a lot of fun. Obviously, we just had our light parade down Mill, which was fantastic, and a big thank you to all the sponsors and the volunteers that make that happen. It's amazing how many people come and really get to enjoy that, and I think it's a good way to start the holiday season. And also, you know, thanks to DTA and the sponsors that make the boat parade happen. So hopefully you guys can come out, check it out. I think the parade starts at 7, but I'm not positive. Okay. And then, secondly, I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update. Valor on 8th, I mean, we're super excited about what's happening. I just want to give a shout out to Naomi and her team for all the work that you guys did to bring this to fruition. It's actually going to be open in about a month, which is really exciting. They've pre-leased all but three of the Work Live units, which, you know, are more market rate, so it's expected, and right now, 95% of those individuals are all veterans. So I think that's something for the city to be very, very proud of, not only for the first for the city of Tempe, but this type of a project is a first for the state of Arizona, so very cool stuff. Yeah, that's not a great photo, but, you know, go by there. It's right on 8th, and I can't wait to have the opening very soon.
Councilmember Granville?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Shapiro? All right, I just want to echo a lot of the comments, and again, I want to thank our staff and the DTA for helping with the Fantasy of Lights Parade on Mill Avenue this weekend, in case you don't notice, trying to get here this evening. We have the great Mill Avenue Arts Fair that starts tomorrow. It's going to be a great time to get some extra holiday gifts for your friends, family, and loved ones, so I encourage you all. Great shout out to Arizona State University for beating the Wildcats, and my good friend in Tucson, Mayor Rothschild owes me a lunch, so I look forward to eating that lunch, as well as having a nice little cool beverage from a local brewery down in Tucson. With that, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and I will conclude with that. The next item on our agenda is our public appearances. Under scheduled public appearances, we do not have anything scheduled tonight. Under unscheduled appearances, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under unscheduled public appearances? Seeing none. You saved me the opportunity of reading a script of what we can and can't say during public appearances. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
(laughter)